Thereabouts. We are calling this meeting of the Select Board to order. I remind folks that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast on Zoom and Sterling Lancaster Television. Did I remember all the right reminders?
Roll call.
I'm confused. Roll call next. So.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I mean, you're in the room. You need to watch it on Zoom while you're sitting.
That was a mistake.
Live the moment, Alex. Live the moment.
Be present.
Be present here. We will do a roll call of the Select Board, and then I will turn it over to Chairman Streeter to, because the first item up for, well, actually, I saw our first item. We will do our minute approval, and then we will roll into the joint meeting. So, roll call, Mr. Allison.
Here.
Ms. Turner.
Here.
Mr. Carrigan is here. So before I turn it over to Frank, next item on our agenda is approval of meeting minutes for the meeting of the Select Board of August 16th, 2022.
I would offer a motion to approve the minutes of August 16th, 2022.
Sir.
Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Ms. Turner?
Aye.
Mr. Carrigan?
Aye.
Three, zero, zero. All right, next, we have a joint meeting with the Planning Board, at which point I will now turn to Frank Streeter, who will begin the Planning Board meeting.
So let me call the role of the Planning Board. Kendra Dickinson?
Here.
Mike Fabro?
Here.
Frank Streeter, here. Planning Board meeting is open at 6:02 PM.
What a good time. All right, so this evening, we're having a joint meeting with the Planning Board and the Select Board to fill the two remaining seats on the Planning Board here in Lancaster that were created by the resignations of Mrs. Carol Jackson and Mr. Roy Maribito on August 16th. The appointment would be effective immediately upon being sworn in, of course, and then the town, the position will be up for election in May of the regular town elections, or until another qualified election is scheduled, but let's assume it's the May elections. Frank, can you remind me, and thereby the townspeople, even though these appointments will expire in May regardless, the length of the term that they would be running for in May should these people choose to remain?
I will have to check in May, and I will be honest, I haven't kept track of which goes with which seat, but there will be two five-year terms, a one-year term and a two-year term.
One five-year term.
Mike is also up for reelection in May.
But my understanding is there are five members, and there's one every five years.
So we're going to have four positions up for reelection?
Right.
I just don't, again, with you.
Right, that's fine.
Yes, there are definitely four positions.
Yes.
They each run for a long time.
The only position not, the only position not up for election in May will be Kendra's, because she will be completing her first year.
And Kendra is the senior member of the board.
Will you stop putting out my age?
Indeed.
Board.
Indeed, okay.
At 22.
So at this point, we will, we have a number of candidates who have submitted. The process was that folks had until today to submit their interest, and we had a number of folks indicate their interests. And there we go. Thank you, Jason. Somewhere. All right. A number of folks indicate their interest. They are here. We had one candidate who had indicated interest early on and withdrew, then we had another candidate who indicated interest and was hoping to send a video à la Frank Streeter from the last appointment, answering the questions that the other candidates will be, will have posed to them today. That person did not do that in time, and therefore is not going to be considered to, for appointment, because they're not able to answer questions from either of the Select Board or the Planning Board. It's worth noting that these vacancies, when they were made, were, we were duly notified, the Select Board was duly notified in time, that this is a joint appointment, so for all paying attention, after the presentations are made, the Select Board, three members, and the three members of the Planning Board will vote. The chairs, having discussed a voting process, we have determined ranked choice voting, so the process, and I'll remind everyone of this when we get to it. But if we have, how many do we have in the room that are candidates? Two? Currently, two. Well, this could be an easier meeting than we thought, but if there were three, and all three were nominated, which has to happen, one of the Select Board or Planning Board members nominate second for consideration, all of those candidates for consideration will then be voted on, people will get ranked choice, you'll rank, I vote for this person first, then this will be my second choice and third, and then we'll tally the votes there. Now, if there are two candidates and two nominations and no further nominations from the floor, which we will let the process play out, because people can still walk in, it makes it a lot easier and it's a lot more different. I'm not, let me finish, but just, it makes it easier because there's only two candidates. Now, there might be some on the Zoom candidates, but yes, go ahead. Sorry.
Just so you didn't have to say that again, I guess our audio is not working.
No, it is.
Is it?
Video, video is not.
Video is being sticky.
I heard both.
I'm sorry, I have that effect sometimes.
Everett, can you hear us?
Steve's always perfect.
Huh?
You're here.
Was it bad?
I was just saying, it's always perfect.
I can't tell.
I hope you're going to work.
I can't tell.
Well, ask Jay, maybe? Can you hear now? If I can see this, like the audio, just say it again.
I said I was going to say it before the vote anyway, so. The mini eyes are on there.
Yeah.
My power is on, but is there, I don't see a cord going from the owl.
So Everett could hear me earlier.
Failed to detect your speaker.
Yeah. Now, could he hear you from that computer over there? I don't know. How's everybody doing? Once we work out these things.
Mr. Chairman, are we required to have this before we proceed?
I do believe we should at least allow the townspeople in on the conversation, and I'm just looking to see if there might be any of the other candidates up there. It doesn't seem, doesn't appear to be.
Carl and Regina.
My wife said the audio just came on.
Ah, thank you.
Good job, Kate.
Loose connection.
Okay, so now the audio's back.
All right, so we're not required to have video, right?
Do you want to try?
We are not.
Touch anything. Audio's fine, right?
We're not required to have video, no.
Okay, great.
I mean, I look, according to my, my hair looks fantastic, so I hate to, it's not on the chance for there to be.
Let the record show.
All right. Please tell your wife to let us know if something happens. Oh, technology, ain't it grand? All right, so we, can you click to see if we have any more? If you are on the Zoom and have sent in and hope to be a candidate for appointment tonight for the Planning Board, please indicate so by raising your hand so we know to call on you.
Because we have no radio, the electronic hand.
No, no, it's after 6:00 PM, but there are two candidates who had submitted, and they're not in the room, so if they happen to be on Zoom, we want at least to consider that, but we're not.
Who candidates are those?
That is Carl Fawcett and Regina Brown. And in the room, we have George Frans and Phil Lawler. Yes? There we go. Okay, well.
I believe that's them.
Yes. I was going to say, that looks a lot like Phil Lawler, and that looks a lot like George Frans, so, so we will take you.
Oh. Regina's iPad, is that Regina?
The one that says Janet?
No.
Janet?
With somebody's iPad?
Frank, do you want to lead the questioning?
Sure.
So what's, so do we, why don't you take it from here?
So why don't we start off with the two of you, because you're in the room, and then if, in fact, it is the correct Regina and/or Carl, please signal as such.
Anybody who does speak, it's the Rob's podium.
You have to come and speak from here, so that it's better heard.
We're getting you a clock. You took the words right out of my mouth to give you a clock.
The most tall of the audios coming through too muffled to understand.
Okay. All right. Let's try now.
Okay.
Can you ask her if she can hear clearly when I'm speaking like this now? This is so fun.
What identified as Janet was trying to shout something.
Trying to shout something?
She says no.
You can always just call into the Zoom on your phone and create.
Okay, I will call into the Zoom and then hand the phone to whoever is speaking. How's that? That sounds fun.
But what about the, what about the speakerphone?
Feedback.
Way I miss the 90s.
Why are we paying?
While we're working this out, George and Phil, would you like to choose which of you would go first?
How about that? George Frans, because I'm about a quarter. Who argues with the alphabet?
That's true.
You do, Phil? I said, who argues with the alphabet unless you do?
I always do.
Oh, well, yes. George, why don't you make your way to the podium, and then whenever we figure out how people are going to hear you, we'll get rolling.
I know, sorry, but that's not a definite extension, or please try again.
Do you think I can see that?
The glass is off.
I can't see it when the glass, I didn't see what the hubble tell us.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID, followed by town.
Says the laptop is the device. Did you see that, Jason?
Yep.
Laptop is capturing the audio.
Enter participant ID, followed by town. Otherwise, just press town to continue. You are in the meeting now. There are more than 30 participants in the meeting. This meeting is being recorded. You are muted. You can mute or unmute yourself by pressing star six. You have been added to the waiting room. You cannot talk or respond until the host admits you to the meeting.
Aren't you the host?
It doesn't seem to be.
No, now she calls.
Hi, George. How are you?
Hello, George.
Hey, George.
There it is.
You are mute. You can mute or unmute yourself by pressing star six.
Does anyone else sign in? Turn on the microphone.
I'm, no one, I don't know why anyone in the room would be signed in.
Maybe you don't know.
Okay.
Is anybody else in the room signed in?
I have not.
It's making the Wi-Fi not great. Alex, you were signed in.
I signed in, I believe. Do you see me there?
Quit out of Zoom.
Why, here you go.
Yeah, you need to quit out of Zoom.
The owl seems to be working now.
Uh-huh. Thank you, Win.
But there's feedback, so turn off that laptop that's in there.
Just, no, shut off the speakerphone.
Star six.
Yeah, star six, and you're muted.
You are mute. You are mute.
All right, now, Win, can you still hear us?
A spy says you're better.
Oh, thank goodness. It's not, I mean, she's not much of a spy if we know exactly who it is, but I do appreciate that. No, we're, problem is solved, so let's try to, huh? What? You can say the word. We know the video's not on.
No, but you turn my iPad and just show everybody.
You are logged. Didn't I just say everyone in the room logged in to log out? Anyway, George.
Good evening, 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 evening. Hi.
Well played. Frank, the floor is yours.
I just sort of lost it here.
Oh, my friend.
Of course.
Oh, we're probably not going to have a record for the minutes because of the audio, so do we want to?
Well, I mean, we haven't done anything yet, so. Yeah, we are very recorded with the TV.
Oh, wonderful. Excellent.
And the clerk can take minutes.
Yes.
Yeah, I know, that's why I was just saying, Kate or I can also.
You're the clerk.
Yes. Realistic, we can have one or two.
Well, we have the TV. Okay, let's go.
What's functional?
I don't know if we're functional, but at some point we have to function as a government, and if the technology's not helping us, we have to roll forward.
Okay.
I mean, sure.
So it's probably easier.
Hold on, Sam, Frank.
Okay. Those, get free, just give me back those when you're done, I'll give you the rest.
Okay, yes.
What is the proposal then? Sitting here isn't helping.
You should give your hair tips or sing.
No one can hear me, so what, give my hair tips?
Turn off the owl and turn on the speakerphone and.
I wouldn't know, I mean, doesn't throw it out the window, I would know.
Would it help if I just left the room sometimes?
I always say reboot. Reboot.
Well, it looks like we're muted.
But I don't think. No, that's an explanation. People don't understand why what you're saying works. So let's just use the phone.
If we just, yeah, and you can just use my.
It's blown south.
We need a lot of time.
All right, then, do the phone. You're just going to have to come close.
Emily's working. I think it's recording through the laptop.
The TV station is recording the meeting.
Okay.
So it's not too late if you're up for appointment.
I'm going to try to beat both of them to the door, so do not say that.
No, 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 no.
Just don't trip over Rob's podium.
I'm sure Rob and I can work together to bar the door, because he's closer.
Enter your participant ID, followed by town. Otherwise, just press town. You are in the meeting now. There are more than 30 participants in the meeting. This meeting is being recorded. You are muted. You can mute or unmute yourself by pressing star six. You have been added to the waiting room. You are muted. You can mute or unmute yourself by pressing star six.
She's going to, in a second. She has to let herself into the meeting and then unmute.
And we've got about three minutes in which to do it.
Some developers don't want the Planning Board seated anyway.
I'll mute.
Hey, Tom. We can hear you.
Possibly Tom is suggesting that developers hack the town hall.
Let's not put words in Tom's mouth, shall we? All right.
Never inscribe.
Now, we're going to try this, yeah, exactly, we'll try this for the 17th time. Can you speak and can the audience tell us whether or not they can hear you?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, also Chairman of the Planning Committee, Planning Board.
Pause. Can you folks hear, George?
Becca and Win are unmuted.
Win, can you hear?
Becca, can you hear? I see unmuted people.
Win was unmuted too. Wait.
I know it was too, yeah. Yeah. Anybody?
Any star six wants to get into the queue? Yeah, we're in.
But did you unmute?
You are unmuted.
Can you hear Sam?
Win, can you hear George Frans? George?
Win, can you hear me now?
Yeah, are you on a phone?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, we can hear you pretty well.
Okay, fantastic. Head.
All right.
All right. The first question, who do you feel you are representing as a member of the Planning Board? Every resident in Lancaster, regardless of where they live, whether they voted this time or not, every resident in Lancaster deserves to be fully represented by every member of the Board. Who do you believe to be the most, what do you believe to be the most important quality in a Planning Board member? The ability to understand complex issues and change as needed if confronted with new information. Also, the ability to listen to every applicant and deal fairly with the project being presented. What is the greatest strength you will bring to the Planning Board? I invariably treat people with courtesy and fairness. In addition, during my 17-year tenure at EPA New England, I worked extensively with businesses, both large and small, to adopt and implement environmental business practices that exceeded the legal requirements while simultaneously helping business become more efficient. What experience do you have with real estate, especially land planning? What relevant skills do you bring to the position? I'm glad about the relevant skills part, because I don't have experience in land planning. Perhaps my greatest relevant skill is the ability to read, write, and understand governmental regulations. Also, and this is urgently needed, the ability to translate government regulations to plain English, so that people can understand what was required without having to hire a team of Philadelphia lawyers. What legal experience do you have, if any? I am not an attorney. As mentioned previously, understanding government regulations and helping business to do so requires a close reading of the regulation and a sharp eye to craft a plain language translation. In addition, during a stint as EPA Regional Indian Program Manager, I learned a great deal about Indian law, a particularly arcane branch of U.S. law, and the application to current tribal issues. Also, as Project Manager for Project XL, an adventure in innovative government policy, I often had to defend proposed changes in the regulations to our Office of Enforcement and Compliance, where the changes could actually increase environmental protection while enabling businesses to operate more productively. Trying to convince the Office of Compliance about anything that was going to be different from what they were accustomed to was a large task, and so it had to be, it had to be beyond any question of a doubt that the environmental outcome of the new, the new approach would be so far superior to the existing regulation that a blind man running for his life in the dark could easily tell the difference. Okay. EPA New England developed and managed eight of the 50 projects done nationally. You know, we had, we had a wonderful crew of people to work with, and our track record in working with Xerox and IBM and international paper and other large and small companies was just without peer. What is your level of computer skills, especially with GIS and Massachusetts, or Microsoft Office Suite? I am barely familiar with GIS, although I have used it on occasion as a member of the Environmental Development Committee. I am fairly fluent in Microsoft Office. Finally, how much time are you willing and able to put into this position? Are you available for meetings at least twice a month, plus hearings start at 7:00 and may go until after 10:00? Do you have enough time available to do the significant homework required to be an active member of the Board, including fully reviewing all applications and coming to meetings with comments and questions? I retire. Therefore, while I value my personal time, I'm willing and able to spend the time necessary to review and comment on the applications and other items at issue. In my opinion, being properly prepared for meetings is one of the bedrock responsibilities of any committee person.
Thank you, George. Before we proceed with any other, which, any other questions or having Phil, there's someone on the Zoom named Regina's iPad, and we're trying to determine whether or not that is one of the other people who had submitted a letter for consideration. If so, can you throw your?
Aye.
Hand up or speak.
Aye. Aye. This is Regina Brown. That's me, Regina's iPad.
Okay. Great. Well, we will have you answer those questions after Phil Lawler does. Who's in the room?
The question's here.
Yes, perfect.
Thank you.
And it appears that we amended this and removed a couple of questions for.
They have the same, the list is up there.
Okay.
She has. You don't remember exactly what George said?
Well, I know what he said. I don't want it to be original.
There you go.
How do I feel, who do I feel I'm representing as a member of the Planning Board? Everybody in Lancaster. I have a particular affinity, though, for the people who've lived here for a long time and are now facing major tax issues, and I think it's unacceptable that some people are being priced out of homes that they've had for generations in the family, and that's something we need to do something about. What do you believe is the most important quality in a Planning Board member? Recently, thick skin, patience, attention to detail, a willingness to do the job, to do the homework, and some perspective, because it's very easy to get bogged down one way or another in the presentations, either by a developer or by an opponent of the development, and you need to keep your perspective. When I came on the Board, the chairman, or, well, for the first meeting at least, was my friend, the late Vic Coitmanaki, and he said a couple of things that have stuck with me and I wanted to get across tonight. The first thing is, he would stop people in a meeting when they said, you know what you want to do? And he'd say, there is no you here, there's only we. We're doing this as a community. We might have different ideas of what the community needs, but if you're not doing it as a community, you're in trouble. The other thing that he impressed upon me and upon people who offended him at meetings was he would say, you have a great idea for this piece of property. It might be a better idea than the developer, but you don't own the property, and there is a free enterprise, a right of ownership, and that's come up again and again, where you think you have just the right idea, the owner of the property has another idea, your idea might not make money, and the owner of the property wants to make money and so forth. What is the greatest strength you'll bring to the Planning Board? Experience. I've been on the Board for 13 years. I am immensely grateful to the three of you who have stepped up, and I'm particularly grateful, because I know what you're going through now, because when I was first on the Board, I was going through it, and you're a little bit at sea. And it took me months to understand what I was doing on the Board, and I think the Board needs someone who knows the history. There's a lot of history in a lot of the things that come up, and who just knows, you know, how, what the business of the Board is, what questions to ask. Do you ask when somebody comes with an A and R plan? What experience do you have with real estate, especially land planning? None whatsoever, other than selling and buying a couple of houses. I'm not a planner. I have no interest in real estate. My only experience is what I got on the Planning Board. So it's as an arbiter, not as a participant. What relevant skills do you bring to this position? As I said, I have thick skin and two years and only one month. What legal experience do you have, if any? I have never been jailed. I am not a lawyer. I have, I'm a journalist by trade, so insofar as I cover political issues, I have a lot of experience covering legal issues, so I have a, maybe a good layman's understanding of the law. I'm not a lawyer, I don't pretend to be, I don't play one on TV. What is your level of computer skills, especially with GIS and Microsoft's Office Suite? I hate Microsoft Office Suite. I use it every day. That's why I hate it. By the way, not nearly as much as I hate Zoom. I'm a little familiar with GIS. I'm a lot familiar with Zoom, that's why I hate it. I've been going through Zoom meetings for the last couple of years, like so many of you. How much time are you willing to put into the position? Are you available twice a week, et cetera? Well, as I say, I was on the Board for 13 years, and I don't think I missed more than four or five meetings in all that time. I do my homework, I come prepared, I'm ready to stay, and I'm ready to stay awake, although as I get older, the point at which I cease to be willing to stay awake is migrating forwards, but I'm, I'm willing to do the work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we proceed to Regina, who, unless Carl Fawcett shows up on the screen, yeah, I don't, that's not his question.
I just didn't know if he bothered.
Yeah. All right, well, we will hear from Regina Brown.
Does she have any questions?
She should.
Regina, the floor is yours.
Hi.[1737.21] Hi. Thank you. So I'm gonna be honest, I did not memorize the questions in order, so I'm gonna improv some of this. I live on Est. Extension. I have been a resident of the town for about 10, 11 years now, but I've worked for the town since I was 18. I love the town. I grew up in Bolton, moved to Clinton, worked Lancaster, to now, well, before it was ever called now, when we had murder recalls and CB radios to run that dispatch center. When I saw the seat was open, I realized that many past opportunities and elections, there was only one candidate or no candidate. So although I have no background in property law, other than property I have owned and rental property that I own, I am not extremely versed in a lot of the laws around planning. But I do have a lot of energy, and I have a very logical way of thinking. My role Monday through Friday is, I'm a supply chain operations principal for a very large company. So I do have that logical way of thinking and understanding of contracts and terminology, but really a strong how-to-get-it-done way about me. I'm very strong in many different forms of computer GIS I'm not familiar with, but give me a half hour and I'll figure it out. Zoom, yep, get that too. What do I think the Planning Board should do? It should listen to the people. And you put, when anyone's in a Board, you have to put the town ahead of your own wants and desires, and that's very hard. That's human, that's very hard, but that's really what you need to do on a Board. Now, listening to some of the other candidates, wow, they got a ton of experience, and my advice is, I'm not asking you to vote for me. I'm asking you to put the best candidate in that spot, and I think I covered everything.
I believe you did. Thank you.
Thank you.
So to remind folks of the process now, that we have three candidates to be asked, and just, Carl, if you're on there, please raise your hand so we know that you are there.
You have to raise it electronically, because we cannot see people.
Well, we can see them if their videos are on.
Yes, we can see them if their videos are on, but that's it. So if you can give us some indication that you are here. I'm not seeing anything.
I'm not either. Okay.
Is there second age of folks or not?
No. All right. Yeah, there you go. Okay. All right. So, as I mentioned at the outset, but I will remind folks now that we have addressed our audio concerns, that we will do this through rank choice voting. So each of these six voters who are up here, the three Select Board members and the three Planning Board members, will receive this ballot. I will pass them your ways. For you, sir. And I will pass them your way. So you write the candidates' names down the left side. After we get the ballots, we will do nominations. So, and then.
Sorry?
Sorry. And then, and then those who are nominated and seconded will go on these ballots, and then what we do is, if you prefer candidate A more, you put that person, you mark first choice, and you refer candidate B the least, you put them as third choice, et cetera. So, and then we will tally those votes. Now, I ask the joint meeting of the Select and Planning Boards, are there nominations for these two? I think we could do them on block, the two remaining seats on the Planning Board to fill.
So if they're not nominated and seconded, you can.
Well, if you're not, if they're not nominated and seconded, they're not a candidate.
Oh. Well, as Chair of the Planning Board, I'll nominate all three of them, because I think they should be considered as candidates, if that's permissible.
It is, but you just have to do it one at a time.
Okay. Well, then other people get to go in turn. Fine.
You can pick one.
George Franz spoke first. I'll nominate George Franz.
Okay. Is there a second for George Franz?
Second.
Second, that's the thing I meant to say, but yes.
Do you think he'll have it?
He did, but, because you said so moved.
I'll offer a nomination for Phil Lawler.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any further nominations?
Regina Brown.
I'll offer a nomination for Regina Brown.
Second.
All right. There are three qualified candidates now on our ballots. Please vote, and then turn your ballots in. Fold them in half if you so wish.
That way you can manipulate the paper more.
Two. I am getting rid of extra ballots.
That's the paper that you didn't serve.
Extra ballots in the running during an election.
One, two, three, four, five, six. What's that?
Their public records, we have to keep them.
Yes, we do have to keep them. All right. Let me just, moment.
I said clerk.
Yes.
Three thousand years?
No.
Only we could use like Microsoft Word and Word Online and.
So there are four number ones.
I know that I'm going to have to keep a transaction, five copies.
There are two number ones for this one.
We need to keep a file page, and then we will purge, but that's changed.
There are two, four, number twos for. Indicating to me relatively clearly.
Yep.
Great.
Everybody received votes, which is good.
Yes. All right. I will submit these ballots for the record to Kate. Everyone did receive votes. Of course, it's ranked choice voting. The two top candidates are Phil Lawler and George Franz. So congratulations. Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Do we want to offer a motion?
I would like to specifically, before we do that, I'd like to specifically thank Ms. Brown for applying. I really appreciate it. You clearly are interested and have a lot to offer for town boards, and please don't be shy going forward. Your town needs you.
You took the words right out of my mouth.
Yes. Talk to me about spring.
Hold on a second. Yes, for Ms. Brown?
No, thank you so much, and, you know, as I said, I really want the best qualified people in there, so, you know, congratulations and give them hell.
We appreciate your interest, and we hope you keep it up. So thank you very much. I guess we should have a motion just to codify, this was, we had, just, a motion that we elected those two to terms that begin effective, upon swearing in until May.
So per the vote results, I would offer a motion to appoint Phil Lawler and George Franz to a term, to the Planning Board for term to end May.
Until the town's next annual election.
Until next annual election. That sounds much better.
Yes.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, I'll do the Select Board. Mr. Allison.
Do you want to call for discussion first, given there's a motion?
Uh.
Not that I anticipate any, but.
Sure. That's why I was hoping to just, is there any discussion on the motion we've all agreed to?
Boom.
Mr. Allison.
Aye.
Mr. Turner.
Aye.
Mr. Kerrigan, aye. Ms. Dickinson?
Of course, yes.
Clerk is aye. So you're also aye, so the vote is unanimous, 3-0 on each Board.
Indeed. Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations to the votes.
Now be sure to get sworn in. Be sure to get sworn in as soon as you can. All right. Is there further business before the joint meeting? So you all can adjourn.
So the Planning Board will look for a motion to adjourn.
Someone?
Second. Discussion?
Here are none. I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Frank, aye.
Planning Board meeting is closed at 6:40 PM. Thank you all for.
Thank you so much for coming. We enjoyed having you.
It's our pleasure. We like being fully staffed.
Ah, there you go. Well done, everyone. All right. Next item on the Select Board agenda. Frank? We're gonna keep going. You may be done, but we are not. All right. Next item on the agenda is public comment period. Rob Zidek is in the room and approaching the podium. As I have said many times before, Kinder, just with all the audio, I want to make sure we, yeah, that public comment remains not negative, that is positive, that people are sharing things and not attacking anybody. No personal attacks or attacks of any nature will be tolerated during public comment for the Select Board, and the Chair reserves the right to, to address such things should they arise. So we will take Rob Zidek for four minutes, and then we've got Carol Jackson and Jay Moody in the queue. Hit it, Rob.
Good, thank you. Rob Zidek, one of three people, speaking as a private citizen of Lancaster, Massachusetts. In the last three years, I have attended many different meetings and many different boards, but of which I did not attend, I have researched both minutes and did. What I cannot find is any complete credible fact-based and verifiable rationale for the Select Board sponsorship of this rezoning article. Sure, we have heard the all-too-familiar and what I believe all-too-empty promises of tax burden salvation. I challenge anyone who can show us or provide any kind of proof, direct by contradiction or by induction, that voting yes on this proposal leads to lower property taxes. Moreover, since we seniors are being used as poster children in these campaigns, show us how we will ever see these savings in our lifetime. What is missing in all of these cost-benefit analyses are the following: opportunity costs. By not quantifying what it has cost us because no development has occurred in four years, we will therefore not know the other missing element. When will we hit the break-even point? Of course, that assumes there is a significant positive difference between what we could already be earning versus what we are projected to earn with whatever is getting proposed. Two, a full comparison of all development possibilities, including those possible today and those that could result from the various combinations of yes-no votes. The most obvious omission are the configurations in which there is no residential development. We are kidding ourselves and each other if we fail to recognize these very real possibilities. Number three, a timeline of the projected costs and revenues. For each of the development possibilities, this is vitally important to us seniors. Four, a translation of incomes and costs to taxpayer effects. We need to recognize that once Lancaster starts receiving these new incomes, there will be several parties fighting over a share of that income, and so often the taxpayers get the floor crumbs. Not that these people drawing their share aren't deserving of it, I am sure many of our chair's services have many needs that are on hold now because they know the budget cannot accommodate them. Most, five, most obvious to any of us who have rigorously practiced risk management are the numerous cost risks. There are only four ways to process an identified risk: avoidance, mitigation, transfer, or acceptance. None of them are free, but hard lessons learned tell us that blind acceptance can bankrupt us. The number-one lesson: every risk is a financial risk. Every impact is a financial impact to everyone in Lancaster. And I'm going to conclude by coming up with 5A, what I believe to be the single largest risk we have.
One minute.
I'll finish. Because these proposals are just so stinking complicated, are lawsuits. I don't see a single dollar projected for risk management, including lawsuit protection. Omitting this very critical element could be disastrous, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol Jackson, you are recognized for four minutes. Can you name and address, please?
Carol Jackson, 40 Harwood Way. I am speaking because at the last Select Board meeting, it was requested that the letter of resignation of the three Planning Board members was to be put in under correspondence and read, and it was not, and it was not discussed either, and that was another promise, but it was ignored, so I am going to read it now. We, three members of the Planning, of the Lancaster Planning Board, have written this letter to notify the town that we are resigning. We will join what has become a steady outgoing stream of volunteers and professional staff. Many residents have, may not realize that Lancaster was left without a planning director for a year and a half after Michael Antonellis left and dis了他的. Presently, Lancaster has an interim town clerk, no planning office manager, and no conservation agent. The council and aging director resigned in July amid continuing harassment after forcing multiple complaints against her from the past year to be reviewed and discarded. On July 18th, a longtime council and aging member resigned at their meeting, citing her discouragement with the town's administration. The Select Board has frequently mistreated the Planning Board, other volunteers, and residents in the past couple of years. Violations of the town's existing code of conduct have not been, have not been followed or enforced. Additionally, the Select Board has failed to enforce their own items on their agenda, which reads, "Complaints or criticisms directed at staff, volunteers, or other officials shall not be tolerated." The Select Board's mistreatment and lack of respect of the Planning Board and its chartered authorities led us to this decision. The Planning Board is an independently elected board charged with the developmental planning of our community, following bylaws, rules, and regulations, and mass general laws. This fact seems to have been overlooked by the Select Board. On numerous occasions, one Select Board member has used public comment on both the Select Board and the member and of agreement meeting to disparage the Planning Board and their decisions regarding the North Lancaster zoning changes and 40R bylaws. We assure you that each and every decision that our Planning Board made complied with both Lancaster bylaws and mass general laws. Conversely, the Select Board created their own timeline for the North Lancaster zoning articles, which did not coincide with the Planning Board's timeline. The Select Board has attempted to derail the Planning Board's timelines by harassing the Planning Board with immature rants during Select Board meetings and on social media. This is clearly an unjustifiable interference with the decisions of the duly-elected Planning Board. It is unfortunate the Select Board chose to pursue this counterproductive behavior. Our, well, this was supposed to be read under correspondence last Select Board meeting. Our decisions are based on serving the best interest of the town according to our Board's timeline, time schedule, and the information needed, rather than the timeline of one individual selectman. As Alan Greenbott, an NPR reporter, recognized, recall campaigns against public officials used to be rare. They've not only become more common, but they're also now more often driven by partisan politics than accusations of high crimes and misdemeanors. The recall proceedings we state are driven by residents who see an opportunity to grind a variety of axes. The top 10 signers on our initial recall petition included the former chair of the Planning Board who lost her seat after her toxic politics were brought to light by the era of reported meetings and internet discussions.
Carol.
By no coincidence, she is seeking to recall the man who unseated her.
Carol.
A disgraced developer, yes?
The four minutes are up.
But this was supposed to be read, and you said you'd give me actually first public comment.
Yeah, no, if you, well, no, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna totally let you finish it. I just want to point out, like, in the minutes, it said that we would discuss it later and that if people had public comment, they could offer it, and, and we didn't see any at the time, and I apologize for that, but I will give you, I'll give you the, I'll, oh, well, we can argue that, we can argue that point, but I'll give you the remainder of the time to finish the letter.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
A disgraced developer who still had not completed his subdivision left the neighborhood adrift this past winter, when he refused to plow it, and who was stymied from transferring maintenance of an expensive private pump station by the Planning Board. The developer who clear-cut the Maharishi property alongside Hilltop Road received a cease and desist order from the Planning Board, from the Planning Board last year. The above developers' real estate colleague who ran for Planning Board this year financed by first developer mentions. A former Planning Board member who, in his last attempt to run for Planning Board, was backed by the same public relations firm used by the Capital Group property. Realtors who were incensed when the Planning Board presented the town with an inclusionary zoning bylaw in 2020, which discouraged tracts of housing that placed a burden on Lancaster. The charges against us, which the above attempted to under penalty of perjury, are preposterous. We're accused of preventing a bylaw from becoming considered at town meetings when the bylaw was not complete until a month after town meeting. Agreements necessary to consider that bylaw have, to this day, still have not been signed. What we're accused of, of, is not possible. Some members are accused of not working with either Board. Another member is accused of conspiring with the Conservation Commission. There is no magic to gathering signatures against a Board. That, to most residents, is obscure in purpose. At Shaw and Clinton, the signature gathered told their prospects, unless the Planning Board members. told their prospects, unless the planning board members are recalled, your taxes will be going way up. At the post office, a young man named Ben was open that he was being paid to collect signatures and have never himself seen a planning board meeting. A special election would force Lancaster to endure another three months of vile rhetoric and division and a special election that would cost $10,000 or more. The chaos in town halls and uncertainty about the remaining term of the seated board has already led prospective applicants to delay their application. And they will not submit them if they are uncertain the seated members can complete their hearing. By resigning, we can ensure the planning board business will be disrupted for the shortest possible period. This letter serves as notice that the below-signed members of the Lancaster Planning Board resign our positions effective 9:00 AM Tuesday, August 16, 2022, and is intended to fulfill the requirement in MGL Chapter 41, Section 109.
Thank you, Carol. Appreciate it.
Signed by Roy Miravito, Peter Kristoff, and myself, Carol Jackson.
Thank you very much.
And I just would like to say that, you know, I think it was
Carol, you went
A important matter at this point.
You went close to eight minutes, Carol. So I, we gotta go to Jay Moody, he's been pulling up.
The whole thing was supposed to be read. And all right, I'll put my hand back up for another public comment. Thank you.
Well, yeah, remember, we're not big on duplicative comments, but we will, Jay Moody, hit it, four minutes.
Yeah, I realized the last year or so, the town was really split apart and had a lot of people against each other going heads.
You're one of them.
Hey, Carol, nobody from the public interjected in your public comment, so please mute your phone. Thank you. Jay, I apologize. Please go. I'll reset your clock.
Yes, and I, there are, I think there are things that we need to do, and one of them is the recall. I think the recall should be, the wording should be changed so that somebody had to be doing something wrong, illegal, or something like that. It just takes away from the way our time runs. I thought the meeting that we had in the government thing the other night was very good. It had people from all walks of life, and we all got together. We were very civil. We, I think, accomplished the beginnings of a good thing. The other thing that really, I thought we had hit the low point, but the low point came Friday. And I won't go into what it was.
Thank you.
But, excuse me.
I said, "Thank you for not going into it."
Yeah, no, but I think it's a low point. And the one thing that I, I and Everett went after was cameras in all the town buildings. And this could have helped solve this problem. I think, I think what happened was the worst thing that has happened in the past. That's my comment.
Thank you, Jay. Appreciate your time. Any other public comments? Jay, can you put your hand down?
Yep.
We'll let Peter go. Pete Kristoff, because, Carol, we want everybody to have a chance to have a comment first before seconds. Pete, you're recognized.
He is the unmuted.
Pete, you're
He's muted.
That's Pete.
Everybody can unmute themselves.
Peter, oh, Peter, you're unmuted. So it's, what, star six?
Or the button.
Right, or just, or the unmute button.
Okay, Pete will come back to you. Carol?
You can hear me now?
Oh, no, go ahead, yeah.
Okay, my name is Peter Kristoff, forty-five Minute Lane. Thank you for letting me speak. For the past couple of months, the citizens of this town have seen signs all over town urging people to vote to recall the planning board members so that we'll get revenue into the town. And I'm curious if, I don't know if anybody on this board can tell me when the revenue, where the revenue has gone that has come in since we all have left office? And if that revenue has come in, how soon will the residents be getting the tax, their taxes lowered as what's promised? If you could answer that one for us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm assuming, since you know that that's not how it works, that that was tongue-in-cheek. So thanks, Pete, for your question. Carol?
Tongue-in-cheek? No, my comment was not tongue-in-cheek. Thank you.
Well, you're asking where the revenue has come in in the last three weeks since you left the planning board and when the townspeople will get money back? I mean, I think you, I think you know the answer to that, and I think suggesting
Well, a lot of people are asking me, a lot of people are asking me, where is the money? Where is the revenue?
Well, then
I'd like to know.
You should have them ask us directly. I don't know what you're just, what you're talking about. So, okay, great. Carol, you're up.
Thank you, and thank you for letting me really read our letter.
Sure.
I just wanted to make the point that it, I think it was very important for the Select Board to speak about this at the last meeting. And they, you breezed over it, and they were going to discuss it at the end of the meeting, and it was not discussed. People were waiting to talk about it, and you entered the meeting. And my next public comment is, I would like to know what's going on with the $8,000 that owed back to the planning board, that a double payment for Judy Barrett was made, and we never received the money back. This was brought up to the Select Board numerous times, and it never got resolved. Yet, you know, $8,000 is not something to sneeze at for a town that is hurting for money.
Right.
And also, where is the bond money for the Melanson? And what's going on with that? With Melanson and for Hawthorne Hills? What, I would like to know what's going on with that money, because that's also a lot of money, and what's going on with that development. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. You can take your hand down. A couple of quick things. First, we did discuss, and in great detail, the last planning board meeting, the impact of the resignations and the plan to move forward to fill those slots. And I apologize if you do not feel like we discussed them sufficiently enough. But, but we did. And I appreciate you raising those two other items. We are in conversations, the Select Board Chair and the, and the Planning Board Chair and the Town Administrator, to address exactly those two things that have been existing with the planning board for a while relative to the $8,000 and the Hawthorne Hill project. So more to come on that soon. So Clayton Arvidson, please state your name and your address, please.
Clayton Arvidson, three Towne Fort Pond Road, Lancaster, Mass. There just seems to be a lot of confusion on why people wanted a change. You know, just for an example of the 580 project, which is the unified box company that Bob Kraft owns, he's trying to put an addition onto his plant. And the bean-pong action that's occurred between the planning board and Conservation Commission that just continuously delays the project. Everything was always a continuance. Everything is a continuance with both these boards. And they swap them back and forth. That's why a change is going to be needed. You know, this unified thing is still, it's, what, eight months, 10 months now? There's still this, a solid, you know, permit process done from Robert Kraft. He had to bring an attorney. He had to bring 12 people into a conservation meeting in order to get approvals. And then what they did was, they approved it, but then they kicked it back to the planning board, and the planning board kind of settled. So that's the process that everybody's upset with. You know, you need to move forward. In order for a town to grow, you have to grow as a taxpayer. And it doesn't happen overnight. It's just like everything. It takes a couple of years where you don't make any money, but you reap the rewards later down the road. You know, when you build a business, it's black tax dollars. It really hasn't cost us anything in extra services. When you build a home, there's 2.5 kids that come in. We have to school every single one of those kids. That's a red tax dollar property as soon as you put a house up on it. Put a business up on it, it's black tax dollars. That money comes in. The reason why every single town has an economic developer is because they want businesses to come into town. And yet Lancaster, for some reason, looking more than we have, didn't want any. We've had no progress in really building any new businesses in town. And, you know, in order for the town to grow, you have to bring these businesses into town. That's what's really, what the problem is. Well, it's not a personal attack. It's basically saying, we need a better process of property owners developing their property. You know, nobody got to tell you what to do with your house. No one got to tell you not to plant that tree. No one got to tell you, you know, "Oh, you can't build a colonial. You can only build a..." Okay, you have to be flexible. You have to be thankful that somebody wants to invest their tax, their hard-earned money into a town. You have to allow them to do it. And by the Constitution, it says that they have the right to develop their property. And yet somehow, we got into this position where we're always, "No, no, no. We don't want the traffic." Well, okay, so we don't want a warehouse here. Instead, we got a warehouse in Lunenburg, right where Sandville is, and now we're going to have the traffic on 70 anyway. You know, so we're going to have the traffic because we're next in line to grow. And whether we take the businesses, or Lunenburg will take it, Shirley will take it, or Devens will take it, Leamester will take it.
You have one minute left.
And we'll still get traffic. You know, so everybody, please realize, you know, in this day and age, we need to slim, we need to streamline our permitting process. And maybe we need to consolidate some of these boards, because there's too many boards. We're a little small town. We don't need to act like we're some big city. You know, we got seven people on a board. I mean, we're a small town, you know, and unless we cut services, you know, if we don't want any businesses, then we got to cut services, period. Or we're going to grow, and we'll grow together. Thank you.
Thank you, Clayton. Next up is Dennis Hubbard. Dennis, please state your name and your address.
Sure, Dennis Hubbard, 258 Grantway, Lancaster. I would just like to make a couple of comments about the board and the rules and how difficult it is. We have bylaws. The town members vote on those bylaws. Our boards enforce those bylaws. Property owners can build as long as they're within those bylaws. Challenges come when they want deviations to those bylaws. So we can open up all of our bylaws, allow anything to go in anywhere we want, and we need to change those bylaws. For as long as we have restricted bylaws, we're going to have our board saying no to things that some people might like. So take a look at the bylaws.
Thank you, Dennis. You get the award for the briefest comment of the night, so congratulations. Greg Jackson, state your name and your address, please.
Hi, this is Greg Jackson, forty Farnsworth Way. I'd just like to, I guess I would second some of Mr. Hubbard's remarks. I'm speaking as a resident, but I'm also a member of the Conservation Commission. I've heard the criticisms both of the planning board and the Conservation Commission, as if these boards are set out on a mission to obstruct developers. I think no one that I know of, you know, if you attended the meetings, you would see that the people take their work seriously on the boards. They're trying to apply the rules and regulations, the bylaws. We have some cases here where developers have come into town, and they're asking for extraordinary zoning relief. Zoning relief, by the way, that, you know, average residents wouldn't necessarily be entitled to. We have a developer in North Lancaster that acts like they're entitled, and that they're entitled to zoning changes. Ordinary residents, you know, they can ask for variances, they can ask for waivers. But I've been to many, many planning board meetings as a resident, and when people come up with development proposals, they are always pushing the envelope. They are always pushing up against the boundaries of our bylaws. They're not set up to obstruct development. They're not set up to raise your taxes. There's a process people go through. I've heard the criticism, I think what I heard earlier, is totally erroneous and wrong, the idea that things are being bounced back and forth between the boards. There is a process when, when a large project requires multiple permits, if it requires subdivision permitting, or if it requires a special site permit, these are not things that are put in place to obstruct people. They're put in place to protect other businesses and residents, other people's property, their property value. There are stormwater permits. The development that was referred to on 584 Pond is a massive development. It is probably one of the better ones that, you know, we've seen recently out of three or four that are in the process. I would say over the past three years or so of going to Conservation Meetings, Planning Board Meetings, I don't see a lot of developments that don't get approved. So there's, I hear these talking points from particular residents. Some of them come off of Facebook. I would suggest that, you know, if you doubt what's going on and things are being carried out to your liking, go to the meetings. The former planning board under Roy Miravito ran a very congenial meeting. All sides were heard. I think they permitted more things than they didn't permit. And the chairman of the Conservation Commission runs a very good meeting.
One minute left.
And all sides, so, thank you. But, you know, the criticisms of the planning board and the Conservation Commission are unfounded and undue. And, you know, they're protecting the town, they're protecting the environment, they're following rules and regulations, bylaws, they're trying to follow a process. There's a lot involved in a large development, like doubling the size of the building. And by the way, if we had kept the former planning board intact, if we hadn't had this big dust-up with the Select Board, that project that was mentioned was on its way to being permitted. There were details that needed to be ironed out. But, you know, that was well on its way. Nobody was obstructing. People were trying to protect environmental resources and go through a proper legitimate hearing. Then when a decision is made, you have a sound decision that is legitimate, and you're less likely to get approval
Time, Greg.
From residents or other businesses. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much. All right, Dennis, I think your hand's still up. I don't think you're back in line. If you are, let me know.
Well, I was just going to add one comment, too, about the warehouse in Lunenburg, which is ours.
Wait, wait, yeah.
It's there. But, you know, it's about one quarter of the size of the proposed one on 70, just for reference.
Thank you.
The warehouse outside could have been put on 70 by right. No variances needed.
Thank you, Dennis. Appreciate it. All right, seeing no more hands and no more people at the podium here, public comment period is closed. Thank you all very much. I will say, I'm going to move the spider closer to us so that we can not have any hearing problems. I will say there was a comment made about a dust-up between the planning board and the Select Board. And I would just like to state, as was clearly articulated in the reading of the resignation letter, that that was their decision to make to resign. We respect that, and we thank them, as we did that evening, for their service. And, you know, I don't, I just didn't want to leave the townspeople with the impression that there was some dust-up that I'm at least unaware of. So
Steve, can I make a general comment?
You may.
We don't respond to public comments typically, except for
Sometimes we do.
Yeah, but typically we don't. This is no criticism of yours. But I heard a reoccurring theme tonight, both in the planning interviews and in public comments, about a general misperception, I think, about what the planning board and Conservation's authority and our scope and limitations are. I think some people tried to clarify that. And I think that at some point, it might be helpful for this board. I, you know, I had planned on doing it when I was a private citizen, of having sort of a forum or a one-on-one about what we can do.
What we can do for what?
How the planning board functions, how the board of selectmen functions, just sort of so people have a better understanding. Because there are a lot of people, for example, who have spoken about the tremendous revenue influx.
Sure.
That's not the planning board's job.
Yeah.
We can talk about that.
It is not.
So we should probably talk about that at a working meeting or a forum or something, but that's all.
So I would suggest it's, I'm glad to add it to the agenda to discuss the roles and responsibilities of the Select Board. It's, as has been pointed out by several commenters this evening, the planning board is a separately-elected board. They are welcome to do the same.
Yeah, not exclusive to them. I was just using as an example from tonight.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is the Town Administrator's report. Town Administrator? Town administrator, please report.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, Kelly Dolan has been hired as the new Director of Health and Human Services. Um, yeah, we, uh, sent something out, um, and I believe Kelly was going to be listening to the meeting tonight, so, um, I don't know
Somewhere.
if she, it says Kelly's iPad, but I don't know if that's Kelly, so not to put you on the spot, Kelly, but if you wanted to say hello.
Hi, Ian here, thank you, Kate. Uh, hello, everybody, and thank you for having me, and I'm looking forward to, uh, making a hit through with everyone.
Thank you, we're we're happy, uh, we're happy to have you and looking forward to it. So Kelly's first day will be Monday, um, so I really encourage folks to stop on in. Her, um, office will be located on the first floor, right outside of the commercial kitchen and gymnasium entrance. Um, and obviously it'll be, um, uh, you know, open door policy for her as we try to get her up to speed as best we can. And we released, um, sort of a little bio about her, um, online. As far as the other recruitments, um, the Outreach and Activities Coordinator will be moving to first round interviews, um, hopefully next week. I'm still working on, um, getting a group together for that. The Recreation Coordinator, um, position, that application period closes on the 23rd of September. And, um, at the time of putting the agenda together, we had actually received 42 applications for that. Um, so that really is something that seems to be quite sought after, which is great. Um, Planning and Land Management has had a very robust, um, response to both their Administrative Assistant and Assistant Planning Director, Conservation Agent. The Administrative Assistant, um, position is a union position, and so we'll be going through that process a little bit differently than than the Assistant Planning Director. Um, and I know that Jasmine has been working with Kendra, um, from the planning board to interview folks, and I believe they have one more, um, person that they'd like to interview that sent, um, their, uh, information and and resume in right after, or right before, rather, um, the position closed. Uh, so they'd like to interview that person and we'll be heading on to second interviews. Um, I know that it says that there was an offer pending, but we are, we are delayed, um, on that for this this late, um, arrival. Uh, as far as the FY '23 budget updates, we have a preview meeting scheduled for November 12th.
Keep going. I'm literally putting like, meeting on the 12th in my phone.
Okay, it's beginning at 8:00 AM. Um, Sue Smiley, who's the Chair of the Finance Committee, has said that they are booked for that date as well. Um, I have a tentative schedule. That was in your packet and was also emailed to you. Um, it's a, um, it's a pretty busy day. It, uh, goes from about 8:00 to 2:00, allowing the departments anywhere from, uh, 20 to 40 minutes, depending on the size of the department, to come in and present their budgets. And I think that's going to be a really important piece, um, for everybody. We also, um, are requesting that it be broadcast on Sterling Lane Taster Television. It will be on Zoom. Um, we're not planning on doing public comment for that because we we really have a tight timeframe, but I know that Sue and I, um, at our regular meeting, which we have every other Friday, had talked about, um, if anybody has any comments specific, they could submit them via email to either she or I. Um, and then they could be incorporated into the next Finance Committee or Select Board meeting, depending on what the nature of those comments are.
And I will say, we will talk, we will remind people of this, um, as often as we can between now and November 12th, but I'm really excited to be doing this. I think it gives the townspeople at large an opportunity to see inside our our budget planning process. Um, and I am grateful for you to spearheading this effort and to, uh, to Smiley as well.
I'm assuming most people aren't going to come and sit through that, but we'll have some sort of, the way we used to do it, because we did it before and it was fabulous, and thank you for bringing it back, was, um, have an agenda ahead of time so people could pop in for whatever.
It'll be, yes.
Yeah, it's in your packet.
It's in your packet, yeah, it's all right.
Yep, good, thank you very much.
And that's what folks will know, so if they're interested in one department over another, they can jump in at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kate.
Um, and that was just other department updates. We are continuing to have our, um, bi-weekly staff meetings, and we, um, at the last staff meeting, talked about having a working meeting where we try to stick with, um, one, uh, agenda item for that meeting that we can try to tackle. And one of the things that we are talking about is a classification and compensation study for both union and non-union positions. And so, uh, we're looking for alternate forms of compensation that aren't necessarily tied to salaries, but are additional benefits, things that that folks, um, might find appealing. Um, so that will be something that we'll likely bring forward to the board as a group.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone on the board have any questions for the Town Administrator? Mr. Allison?
Thank you for your brief look.
Ms. Turner?
I don't thank you, sounds exciting.
I join them in thanking. All right. Next agenda item is our Administrative Budget and Policy section of the agenda. Uh, first item on that is discussion regarding special town meeting, um, and the town meeting warrant. Um, as you all may remember, when we last met or the meeting before that, um, we were hoping to have a town meeting by the end of September to consider, uh, the zoning, proposed zoning changes, as well as a few other items. Um, uh, as the process has been undertaking, and you know it better than most, Jason, um, it became evident that we weren't going to be able to meet a timeline by then. I still hope that we will be able to get something done, and I'm pretty confident that we will, um, by the, by Thanksgiving, at some point in November, um, if not sooner. And so I would just, this is just really to discuss it as a board and inform the public that they, if they were holding the evening of the 27th of September to come to a special town meeting, they can binge something at home if they'd like, um, because, uh, there will not be a special town meeting that evening. I, my opinion, so the other thing is the closure of the town meeting warrant. Um, uh, it is open right now. I would suggest that we just, rather than close it and then reopen another one, I would suggest we just keep it open and, uh, and then, uh, add to it these items when, uh, appropriate. But I don't know what you all think about the special town meeting timing. Ms. Turner?
I think it's obvious that we, um, can't meet the deadline of the 27th. We had voted to close, so I think we probably, because we had voted to close the warrant.
We voted to open the warrant.
Or open the warrant, I thought we had voted to close it on the 12th.
Uh, no, we were going to, we were, we voted to have it on the agenda to close it on the 12th, but we can just leave it open.
Okay, okay. And did we vote the town meeting date? Do others do?
Did we vote something on that?
I don't think so. Yeah, we just, we had set, um,
I just want to make sure that we took a vote.
I don't believe we did. I mean, they were in the minute, it would have been in the minutes, and I don't believe we took, took an actual vote.
The warrant closing, that would signify
The calling of the meeting. So the meeting was never called, despite the fact that the date was discussed. So by leaving it open, you will need to close it 14 days, and that signifies
The calling of the
The calling of the meeting.
So we, although we had discussed publicly our desire to have a meeting on September 27th, that meeting wouldn't kick off until the warrant was closed.
So we're willing, well, listen, we will, excuse me, the general consensus of the board right now is to leave it a little more flexible, more of us until we have a better idea of where we're at.
And then the only thing we have to do is have a meeting, close the warrant with the appropriate items on it, that we want to consider the special time meeting, and do that at least 14 days in advance of when we want to have the special time meeting.
Yeah, I don't know about consensus, uh, but, uh, but I, but I hear the the comments. Uh, so, so can we recap why we believe the 27th won't work?
Um, I, all indications from, uh, folks, I was having conversations with yourself, I know you have a different, a difference of opinion on it. Um, uh, but I believe that there's, at least in my opinion, there's more work to be done to get us to a favorable result relative to the negotiations on MOUs and MOAs. And, uh, if we give ourselves a little bit more time, it won't hurt the process, but it will allow us, uh, to get, um, products that we can consider.
What work?
What work?
You said there's more work to be done, what work?
Uh, I just, there's, I know there's conversations happening around town, and we, we, you know, we've had meetings to talk about, um, different issues, and I've
So I just want to be clear, it's
Frank Strider about his
It's my understanding, the planning board, I'm sorry, it's my understanding that the MOU is all set, we've got a schedule. I I believe we are going to meet on, well, we are going to meet on the 13th. I've asked for a meeting on the 20th, we'll review the outcomes of all of that with the select board on the 20th in preparation for the 27th. So I, I don't, I, I don't have any information to believe that the 27th doesn't work.
So my, I guess my, my issue is if we get it presented to us on the 20th, um, like, if it's something that, you know, we'd like more time to consider, then the 27th doesn't give us enough time. This just buys us more time with that impact.
Okay, I, look, I support the board's desire to, whatever we decide as far as our vote goes, that's fine. I just want to state as the Chairman of the MOU Committee, we are prepared to have something in front of the select board on the 20th in preparation for a meeting on the 27th. That's our plan.
So Jason, the reason I assumed, you know what happens when you assume, the reason I assumed that the meet, that was the consensus of the board is because I had watched the MOU meetings. Um, and I thought that you weren't at that point yet. Um, if it's your, I do think that we have told people that we were going to look at this, discuss the MOU when it was done, and vote to adopt it, uh, or not. And then give the public time to digest it and look at it. Do you feel as the Chairman of the MOU Committee, um, that it's beneficial to have, have it that soon? I mean, does it, or it does, because I know you've done a lot of work on this, so I'm trying to also respect your work and hear it.
So can, can you repeat your question? I don't really, I'm I'm not sure I understand the question.
The question was, sorry, we had feedback that we couldn't be heard. As a, as Chairman of the MOU Committee, uh, you're obviously more familiar with this than anybody, although I have watched, do you feel that there is a benefit? My concern is that if we get it on the 20th and then have questions or time, it will be difficult to communicate to people in a week to have a well-informed town meeting. Is there, is, is, does it benefit you or the MOU Committee to have it remain on the 27th?
So I sent an email out to the board two weeks ago, formulating, it may have been three weeks ago, formulating the plan. I can recap that plan. So on, uh, let's see, on Friday, close a business, I sent the current draft of the final version of the MOU to this board. And I sent it to Capital Group and to the MOU Committee members. So it's been in everybody's hands. It will be presented tomorrow at the meeting for the MOU Committee to review. Uh, we are scheduled to take a vote and our feedback and findings, and send that back to the select board. That's obviously non-binding, uh, but it's our feedback. I've also encouraged everybody in the MOU Committee to formalize their opinions on it. And that is fully available in preparation, two weeks ahead of time, for a September 27th town meeting. I would not have made that plan if I didn't believe it was enough time. No one has told me in however many weeks it's been that that's not a satisfactory plan. So I think I'm here saying that the MOU Committee is ready. If there's a different reason not to have that, we should talk about it. Uh, but the MOU Committee, from my understanding, is all set to go.
So I will, okay, sorry, I was just going to say, we also had shared a desire with the town to have, uh, uh, a forum to discuss with the town in a public setting, um, what the warrant items were, give them a chance to hear more about it. I don't think the one-week notice gives us enough time to do that, um, but perhaps it does. Kate, do
I I would only bring up that the, um, EZ hearing for the planning board, which is independent of the MOU, would need to be scheduled before town meeting, right? So we have
Yeah, I can't speak to that.
So it got canceled, so I, it would need to be, you know, at a time where the planning board could call it. It has to be duly called in two separate publications in two weeks. And then they have to have time to provide their thoughts on the matter, their recommendations. So since they didn't have it on the date that they had planned, we need to wait for them to, that's independent of that, but we do need a, a new date.
Yeah, I can't speak to any other committee or any other schedule. I can say I feel like the MOU Committee has been very forthcoming in their planning and their process. Um, it's been very transparent to this board.
Yes.
And I think we're prepared for the 27th, and if there's reasons not to do it outside of that, uh, like a forum, for example, I don't, I must say that MOU Committee was not asked to give more time so the forum could happen.
Well, we discussed the forum at a board meeting, but more importantly, we won't have a, 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 easy
I can't speak to any of that.
No, I know, but that speaks to the desire to have, and you're correct, you laid out a plan, none of this is the, I want to be very clear, none of it's the MOU Committee's, um, doing. But I do think giving the town due consideration and time to consider what's in these agreements, uh, and have the, um, meeting at a later time makes all the sense in the world if it doesn't hurt the process.
So what I'm hearing you say is that there's another, another timeline sensitivity issue outside of the MOU Committee?
That's not, yes.
Yeah, the planning board, yeah.
Okay, so, so the planning board, so what's that issue?
So they need to schedule, they need to call whenever they're going to have their EZ zone, but it needs to be at least probably two and a half weeks from today.
This is just information gathering, I am certainly not placing blame to any
No, 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 I mean, so because
Because obviously there's been a lot of stuff.
Well, they had one set for the 6th, right?
Right, but that didn't have
But that was not able to have, they weren't able to have a hearing, so they said, we'll postpone for another day.
So the, so, and the, the issue with that is, is that you, they can't just call it with the 48 hours that we normally do. That needs to be called here in a combination.
One percent of the time, because I can only move this microphone around so many times.
Yeah, sorry, and then they need to have a determination, so it, I would think that they would need
A couple of weeks at least to write a report.
Well, probably three. Couple of weeks?
Frank says he can get that done.
I was thinking a few days, I was thinking a few days.
I think by statute, they're allowed more time. Do you have something to say or clear anything?
They are allowed one. No, no, I was clear, I was clear. I do, so, watching, sorry, watching the memorandum of understanding committee, and I appreciate everybody's work on that. Um, there was some concern raised by members of, um, inviting the, formally inviting the cap, I know that you've always been very open and very good to invite the DePetri's, the representing the Capital Group, in. And I think that one of the reasons, drivers for the meeting on the 13th was to make sure they were formally invited or knew about it, which I guess
Well, yeah, we don't, we don't need to relitigate how they
If you have a question, ask it, but I'd appreciate not to speculate on intentions. I'm right here, if you have a question, ask, yeah.
That, that's what I was getting at, yes, is my question is, was, am I, is that the case, and were they formally invited? Okay.
I know, were they formally invited? Absolutely, they've been invited to every meeting.
Okay.
Um, and they're invited to attend on the 13th.
Great.
Okay, that was a question.
So, uh, more to come, uh, unless the board wishes to
Yeah, so it sounds like, so the, the EZ side, it sounds like that there's an issue with the timing of the meetings. Look, there's, there's a lot of stuff going on there, that's okay, okay. Now, that makes complete sense, right? Because we need to make sure that we follow the process and make sure we get all of the meetings and there's enough time for determination. So, yes, that sounds like the 27th will not work.
Okay.
But, but perhaps we could ask the planning board to, when will work? Um, yeah, to, to opine at a next meeting when it, when it will work, so we can make sure that it's properly called in enough advanced time to get it into papers.
Indeed.
And if there's a desired timeframe for a forum, that's all, we should lay that out.
Yes.
I think Oh, sorry, and if the, sorry, and if you want to have the forum after the meeting.
It will be, I think it makes sense to only have it after the planning board here.
So that may add another week or so.
I mean, it can be scheduled well in advance, once we know the date of the hearing.
And I do think having a forum of both the planning board and MOU Committee would be helpful for people.
Got it, okay. Anything further on this item?
Yeah, I would say, uh, to any resident who's thinking about attending a forum, um, I'd do one better and attend the MOU Committee meetings and attend the planning board committee meetings. I mean, forums are great. You can also call any one of us individually, I'm happy to talk about it. All of us have been working really hard across the board, all of the MOU Committee members, I mean, this has been a long time coming. And, you know, we will have the final draft out, and we will have a vote, right? That's part and parcel, so if it's a, if it's an MOU that we don't like, the vote will reflect that. If it's an MOU we do like, it will reflect that, and that will be presented to the select board for their consideration.
Thank you. Okay. Anything more on that? Kate, no, good, okay, Alex, anything more?
No.
Okay, great. Uh, next item, um, poor Mr. Murphy's been sitting here for
It's okay.
For an hour and a half.
I've been in meetings all day.
There you go. So, um, uh, the next item relates to Spectacle Pond Avenue. Um, we're not, we're not, I'm just going to, um, um, speak on the issue and then I will yield to you, but you, to first some public comment, um, outside of the, the, the normal time, but you'd have to come right to the microphone, not to the
Very good.
So, um, we've all received, we, the select board, have all So we've all received, we, the select board, have all received multiple communications of very well-coordinated effort, so well done, whoever's doing that, those presidents of Spec Pond Avenue, to communicate to us their desire to have the road recognized as a public way and therefore maintained and plowed as such. And you tell me when I go astray. Okay, sorry. There is, so first and foremost, it's important to set the table here that this is, the select board, we appreciate, we are the representative of the people for the town, and we are glad to work with the town boards and commissions. This is not a decision that we can make or something that we can acknowledge. It's a DPW question. But what, but your issue, well, it is. The issue you raised, we want to make sure it gets attention because it is a significant one. And we want to make sure that the residents who have asked for us to dig in on it, dig in on it. It is gonna be a process. It's going to take time. And we, we ask you for your patience and your grace as we're working through this. And, and you're pulling out papers, so I'm assuming you have something you'd like to say. So, but I, I just wanted to raise it because so many of you have raised it with us. And it is, it's a big issue that we're trying to tackle with and for you. But I want to be clear that we are not empowered to just decide matters relative to DPW responsibilities. So I just want to be very clear at the outset. We're, good, we're digging into the information that you've sent and working with the DPW to try to get the information that they have. But it's not something that we can just wave a wand and address. But I yield to you if you have some comments you'd like to make. Sure. But just a couple more.
How can you get a fellow, Buster?
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
I'm glad you can take that. For the record, my name is David Murphy. I am a resident of Spec Pond Park and a member of the Spec Pond Association. First of all, to be very clear, and I believe you've all received the information packages I have sent you, it is not our position that we are looking for Spec Pond Ave to be accepted. It is our position that it is and was an accepted road and that it was improperly dropped in 1957 is by what I consider illegal and not even a vote. So therefore, it is my position, and I think I can speak for the association, that it was dropped by an administrative error. And for the last 60 years, we have been able to muddle through on our own and no one has challenged this error. So to what you've just mentioned, that it is not up to the board to correct the situation, I would say differently, that I believe the board does have the ability to correct an administrative error. The second part of your argument is that this is a DPW issue.
One that cares about the argument.
Okay, and if I can make it clear that I have worked my way through channels, starting with Kate, then meeting with the head of the DPW, and then having a formal meeting, as you can see by this information, that it was brought to the DPW. They in turn, and unless I don't want to misquote them, seemed to indicate that my research was valid and that the road probably is accepted. But they were unwilling to undo, as they said, 60 years of quote-unquote precedent. And therefore, they were going to bring it to the select board, which apparently they did not do, and I found out, which is why I started my campaign. Now, my experience, unfortunately, I had attempted to do this acceptance or correct, I shouldn't say, I don't mean to say acceptance, correct of this administrative error 10 years ago. And I found it just kind of was a giant game of, well, I don't know, better term, whack-a-mole. And since this has been brought to the Public Works Department and they kicked it to you, I don't see why kicking it back to the Public Works when they say that it is within your ability to correct this administrative error.
Sorry.
And one more final point, I just wanted, and then I will yield to you. I also, and I've heard all kinds of, especially on social media, Kate, you're, well, I still avoid it, that, oh, we can't afford this, or all kinds of other issues. First of all, you're currently maintaining Stagecoach Road, which has 12 houses on it, albeit 12 $900,000 homes. But you're plowing that. Now, that is a newer sub-development that was put in after the town adopted the sub-development laws that the state accepted in '53, you accepted in 1954. So you have a plow truck on Stagecoach Road. It wouldn't kill you when he pulls out to bang a left and another left and go down. You're only looking for the main road to be plowed. The next part of this is, we feel we're entitled to be paved. Lancaster does not use town tax money to pave its roads. You use Chapter 90 State Highway Fund. So for you to put us on the 2024 paving schedule would not cost anything. So while people are licking their chops on how to spend money that new development's gonna bring in, we're not asking for that. We're asking for the services that legally we are now entitled to. So we don't need a vote to accept the road. It's been accepted. We believe that it's an administrative error and you do have the ability to correct it. And if you don't, please tell me who does.
Sure. So first, I'm grateful that you're here. And this is why we put it on the agenda, was to make sure that we had you come and speak on this, because it's important. And the residents of, of that road impacted by this, you know, if this was a cler, if this was a clerical error, you know, are, are not to blame here.
Not clerical, administrative.
Sorry, administrative error are not to blame for any of this part. You were doing your part. No, no, I know that. I'm saying you all are doing your parts as citizens to advocate for yourself, and I appreciate that. We're trying to figure, and I can only speak for myself, newest guy on the board, trying to dig in just to make sure that when we make this decision or when the town takes an action, that it's appropriately taken. So I, I wanted to make sure we brought it here today because it, it needed airing and discussing so that people understood what the issue was. I do not intend, at least I'll do my best to make sure this doesn't linger long and that we, we dig in and address it soon. But there is at least some work for me to do to fully understand and do the research and be able to step and speak on it, so.
Okay, are you looking to do research into verification of the facts I provided? Or are you looking to town council for further guidance?
We are going to do all of the above, I think, to make sure that we're taking the appropriate steps for the town.
Okay, since I, at this point, am the point person for the Spec Pond Association at this time, may I request letters to town council? Because my experience has been if you ask a broad question, you will get a broad answer, which will lead to endless continuance.
Yes, I, look, I don't, I, I will say this. I'm not gonna promise that I'm gonna give you every letter sent to our lawyer and from our lawyer. But I will tell you, we're going to try to get to the bottom of this as soon as possible. I can't sit here right now and take you through every step of how I'm going to do it. But this, when you started, I had not heard from the DPW about this. When you started this campaign, which was well done and to get everyone's attention, so, points. You know, that was the first I was hearing about. And so I appreciate the materials that you've sent. We are digging into it. There are some obvious questions, since likely no one who took the minutes from the 1957 town meeting is around to opine on what happened.
Oh, no, they weren't taking.
No, I know, but no one is here to talk about why there seems to be gaps.
No, we have somebody raised a hand and said, we would put in our own road.
Right.
So those are public records.
I know, I know, I saw that, which, that is part of the problem when you volunteer to put in your own road. But this, this, we will have this conversation and we're gonna keep the, the effort to research this move forward. But I wanted to give you a chance in a forum to talk about this. We don't have an answer for you now, which we indicated when this was put on the agenda. But I wanted to make sure that you were heard and know that we will, we are going to dig into this and get an answer to.
May I request a timeline?
You may request one. I don't have one to give back, but as soon as possible.
Can we run it up at the next select minutes meeting?
Sure, we will add it to the agenda.
If you would, I would appreciate that. Do you expect an answer from town council prior to that meeting?
I can't, again, when you.
He works for you. If you tell him when you want, he'll give it to you.
There's a lot of she's involved in town council, so. Of course, yes, yeah. But I just want to clarify. As I said, I can't give you timelines, so I'm not gonna go through the elements of the timeline and try to give you timelines for the elements of the town.
May I have an update in your next meeting?
That's what I've already agreed to.
Okay.
Thank you. Good question, Mr. Allison.
I've asked the board to indulge me for a couple of minutes. I found this interesting, super compelling.
Yes.
For lots of reasons. So, and yes, good job on the campaign. Well done. So the first thing I did is I went down to Spec Pond Ave. I hope I didn't frighten anybody, frighten anybody else. Kind of, I ran it. It's only half a mile. To be honest, I was expecting to see grass, you know, dirt. It's a really nice road, right? So it's, it's not like.
We made it ourselves.
It's not like it's something that, you know, you're gonna have worry about plows or anything like that. And I went down, you know, nice associate, I swim Spec Pond all the time, so I'm like, oh, I've never really seen it from this angle. It was quite nice. So, you know, to Alex and to Steve, it's not a lot of road. I can't speak to the Stagecoach Road. So then I thought to myself, so what if I woke up one morning and I said, you know, I, I just found out that my road is supposed to be plowed by the town? I'd be pretty upset because I've been paying taxes, however many years everyone's been paying taxes. And I think I saw like 80 mailboxes there. I don't know exactly how many are on Spec, but there's a lot of, a lot of mailboxes there.
On the road, there were 50.
So if the board will, can take humor in what I'm about to share, I said, who can I ask for their opinion on this? I went to Hawthorne Lane. And I went to Hawthorne Lane and I asked a resident there. I said, I know you all are having some issues getting your road accepted, and there's a lot. I'm like, what if you found out that another road in town, all of a sudden magically got accepted?
No, it is accepted.
Sure, I'm, I'm sharing my perspective. Right? Because from my perspective, it wasn't an accepted. And you've prevented, presented evidence to the contrary. So I'm learning, but I'm, I'm sharing an experience that another resident may have. And, and the resident said, it was a perfect answer even from Hawthorne Lane. They're like, well, you gotta take it one by one. And I said, because I worry about Pandora's Box, right? That's how I think about this from a culture perspective. I understand your individual situation and I sympathize. But what happens when a board makes a determination on something that happened many years ago, right? To the DPW's point about precedent. And their response on Hawthorne Hill was great. They said, you gotta take it one by one. And I won't forget that, right? You have to take it one by one, and yes, everyone would love to get a positive vote on every one of their situations, but I don't, I don't think we can do that, right? We gotta look at each situation one by one. So I'm grateful that Chairman Carrigan wants to follow the due process. Now, that's my long story. I do want to take a moment to advocate for Spec Pond Ave. I want to advocate from the position of last year, this town, this board being in a very tight spot with Hawthorne. I remember a number of emails. There was questions about paving. There was ice storms. I don't want that to happen again. I don't feel comfortable if that happened again. So I would, I would.
When was Hawthorne Lane built?
So let me, let me get going. So I, I'd like to make a motion that we have a determination from council where we have a path forward from whomever it's going to be by October 15th. And the reason I'm choosing October 15th is I really feel uncomfortable. If snow comes, I don't want to get more emails about, you know, you know, the ice, ice is here. Who's paving? We don't know who's paving. Now we can't get somebody, now we can't get somebody to plow because all the plows have been taken up. So my motion is to have a, you know, some sort of determination for Spec Ave by October 15th.
Is there a second?
A second discussion?
So I, I made the motion because I, I really think it's in the board's best interest and in the town's best interest to have a decision prior to any snow. And for those who have known me long enough, I, there was a big snow on Halloween about eight years ago. And yeah, I will never forget that snow. So I would ask that we have a determination by mid-October.
Do you have any comments?
Um, I, I appreciate and share, I think, both of your concern for this and I know for yours, to be, to be expeditious. We have enough on our plate. It would be good to get it off the plate. I'm a strong believer, as you know, very conservative in my promises. I like to under-promise, over-deliver. So October 15th is, there's a lot of historical issues to be tweezed out and discussed. And first, I know that roads are, were both takings and easements. I was surprised when I saw some of the roads that were on our list that were, they claim that they were not taken, but they, but were not legally accepted. I was at some of the meetings where they were accepted, so we'll have to look into that. So given our, our sta, given our, our status, I, I am reluctant to, to say October 15th, but I would heed your desire for this to be done as quickly as possible.
So I will say, I think we can probably meet the deadline. I don't, I'm not 100% comfortable with it. I think we can meet it. And I mean, this is, the facts are, is what Daniel Patrick Moynihan said, you're entitled to your own opinions, but not your own facts. So the facts are what they, the facts are what we have in front of us, which are, and correct me if I'm wrong, the road was accepted in the 1930s.
1938.
1938 by the town. In 1957, there was a meeting, a town meeting where it was envisaged to unaccept it, or what was the term of art? Do you know what the term of art was?
Discontinue.
Discontinue.
And no vote, and no vote was taken.
And no vote was taken. But at least no vote was recorded in the minutes, we can leave it.
Specifically says no vote was.
It does, okay, that's right.
Was there a recording of that?
Yeah, Zoom recording of the 1957, yeah. You're right, does clearly say no vote was taken. It does also indicate, and you alluded to this, some residents said, we'll build our own road. So the question we're, I'm, I won't say we, I'm trying to get to is the royal we in honor of this week. But what I'm trying to get to is, what does that mean? Does that mean that when that one resident said, we'll build our own road, were they the Dave, it's Dave, yes, Dave Murphy of then, of 1957?
They call David when I'm in trouble.
Okay, good, all right. So I'm not gonna stick with Dave forever. So were they the Dave Murphy of 1957 saying, we'll build our own road, which then, after a certain period of time, one might argue legally that those residents have taken the responsibility of building and then maintaining and plowing that road? So, and then there's 60 years of precedent of, of that happening. So that's, that's what's in front of us. What I'm trying to tackle is, how do you go against that and, against that precedent and acknowledge that there was no vote taken to, again, what was the word again?
Discontinue.
Discontinue.
May inject one thing.
But did I get all the facts straight? At least the, the facts as we understand them.
If I may inject one thing, though.
Just give me two seconds to wrap my thought. So that's what I'm struggling with and I, you know, we've gotta determine what we as a town, like whether Steve Carrigan as a citizen wants to do, wants to give, you know, do a solid for everybody on Spec Pond Ave, and if I feel like it's right, like, that's one thing. But I have an obligation to the town overall and to make sure that we're doing what is proper for the role I sit in right now. It's not what I want personally necessarily all the time, but it's what's appropriate for the role I'm in now, looking at the totality of all the information. So that's the struggle that I, it's, it's what I'm dealing with myself. I agree with Jason, you're, it was, it's compelling. I thought that the information you sent a while ago is compelling. All the emails are compelling. I, I get it. I'm just struggling with that piece of it, so.
If I inject one thing, between 1938, you had the Hall and Evans annexation and everything, which threw everything into a monkey wrench, and World War II sort of got in the way. Between 1945 and 1955, 40 of the 50 homes in there were built. It would make no sense, especially after a uniform code of, you know, road acceptance and discontinuance was enacted in 1953 and accepted by the time of '54, that after 40 homes are built. And Spec Pond Ave, by the way, is a delineated road. It is not a right-of-way. There are survey markers. It would make no sense that someone would say, hey, we just built 40 homes. But you know something? We want to pave ourselves. Makes no sense.
I agree with you. I, I agree with you on it making no sense. I just beg the time to do the work, to make sure that someone in this chair in 25 years is not saying, what did that bonehead do?
It's still gonna be you. What are you talking about?
Better either be a new chair.
We got a motion, a second and discussion.
So.
Yeah, so I.
So I.
Can you continue the discussion a little bit?
You can continue the discussion. I'd rather, due respect to you, Dave. I'd rather the discussion remain with the board, so.
If there are any questions, my research is pretty thorough.
Yes, it is.
I encourage you to reach out to me and I can probably save you a lot of legwork.
We appreciate it.
And point you in the right direction.
And thanks to your, your neighbors for their kind and incredibly polite, considerate, respectful outreach. And thanks to your, um, your neighbors, um, for their kind and incredibly polite, considerate, respectful outreach, um, calling our attention to an issue that is not new to anyone who lives on Spec Pond Ave. But, um, it's, uh, I, I really can't stress that enough. I really appreciate the way in which you all engaged us in this discussion, uh, and hopefully the way in which this conversation will continue.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, thank you for your help.
Thank you. Yes.
So as far as the motion for the 15th.
Yeah.
One of the things, having sat on previous boards where we discontinued roads in the past, or faced the same question before, was obviously we have to look at, and I'm sure Dave probably did, um, other meetings. Ascetkill Road was one that comes to mind that came to us for discontinuance. And then it went back and forth based on, on several, many town meetings actually, before we decided what to do with it. So I think that it's gonna take some time, some historical research.
So I guess my question, your wording was resolution, um, does that word was?
Resolution, that's it, yeah.
It's, and.
Because they need to, they need to know if they need to pay for plowing or not.
No, I got it, yeah. And, and so that is so.
Determination.
Determination, one way or the other, by October 15th.
Yeah, I just, I'm worried about this being dragged out, and we have a lot of pressing priorities, don't get me wrong. I just think we have to prioritize this because of our experience last year.
Understand. Um, I would, despite your, um, uh. No, very eloquent, um, uh, almost Churchillian, really, uh, presentation. Um, I'm wondering, no, I was really gonna refer to your, your fear of a Halloween snowstorm, which I'd like to hear that story at a later date. But, um, I, I wonder whether a November 1st date, um, would be more amenable to the board. Um, there is, and I still can't guarantee that we'll get it done, but I will work very hard on my, on my end to do what I've gotta do. And I'm not saying that we wouldn't do it sooner.
I move to amend the motion to change the determination date to November 1st.
Second.
Is there any discussion on that?
I think we need input from the DPW because they will be charged for this, and they've already talked about the budget. Now, if they're legally required to do it, and we come to that determination, then, um, we'll have to deal with the budget impact and so on.
Yes, we'll have to deal with a lot of impacts, one way or the other. But I think.
Half mile road.
But I agree with Jason, that the residents deserve an answer, so.
I mean, I would love to hear the impact this is going to be. I mean, if it's a lot, like I said, I ran it, it's not a troublesome road. But may, maybe I'm wrong, I've, I've never plowed in my life, so I could be wrong.
I would say it would be a very troublesome road for me to run, but almost any road is a troublesome road for me to run.
How are you plowing?
Yeah, well, in my, in my little Hyundai, not good. Um, so, uh, alright, well, is there a, any further discussion on this? Yes, any further discussion?
Um, no, it's good to get resolutions.
Okay, so all those in favor of the motion as amended, Mr. Allison.
Aye.
Ms. Turner.
Aye.
Mr. Carrigan, aye. That's 300. Thank you. And thank you, um, Jason, for.
May I have a five-minute recess?
You may. Uh, so we'll, uh, stand in a bi-break recess, uh, four or five minutes. Exactly five minutes. At least that's what the minutes will say. Um, okay, uh, next item is Public Records Foyer Request Discussion Policy Draft. Ms. Turner.
So I would like to request that we table this and bring it back. I owe, um, Kate and the board a more comprehensive overview of different towns' foyer examples.
Okay, so move to table.
Do we need to, or just?
Need to vote to table or just move?
No, okay.
Good, fantastic.
I'd like it to be on the next agenda, give me a good incentive.
Sounds good. Alright, next item up for bid, uh, discussion and coordinator for joint meeting with Finance Committee relative to ARPA spending.
I thought it was supposed to read coordination.
I sort of assumed, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, we would like to have a joint meeting. Is this, um.
This is, yeah.
Ms. Turner, you requested to put this on the agenda, so hit it.
Yes, I mean, there's, we were talking about an ARPA plan, we also had that consultant, so getting together. And, um, Kate, have you had a chance to talk to Sue about this? Sue Sniling?
Yep.
And is that something everybody's up for?
My understanding was that there was going to be a policy document coming from you, and I think they're, they're waiting regarding ARPA spending. And I was using ARPA spending as part of the capital plan, that's when this came up, and you were looking for a different.
Okay, so I apologize, I saw this on you, but if you ever set refer back to that. So then let me do this, and also, um, so you and table this one as well.
Table this one as well.
We're just flying now.
Table, table, moving along. Ah, and, uh, next item is the Declaration of Constitution Week, which begins on the greatest day in the calendar, September 17th.
A day of infamy.
A day that will live in infamy, it's my birthday. Uh, and for reading the proclamation, I yield to Ms. Turner.
Alright. Uh, thank you, this was offered to us by the DAR, Daughters of the American Revolution. Proclamation, whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principle of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas, September 17th, 2022, marks the 255th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas, it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable, memorable, excuse me, anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas, Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the Lancaster Board of Seligman, do proclaim September 17th to 23rd as Constitution Week in the Town of Lancaster, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. In witness thereof, we have here unto, set our hands and cause the seal of the Town of Lancaster to be affixed this 12th day of September and of the year 2022.
Thank you.
And Steve's birthday.
And my birthday. Thank you very much. Um, we will have to sign the proclamation at some point, do you want to sign this version?
You can sign now.
Thank you. Alright, next are appointments and resignations.
Let's go, let's go.
Uh, we have an appointment, the Conservation Commission of Erin Callanan, return to expire June 30, 2025. More information on that? Okay. Yes, ma'am? Oh, hi Erin, how are you? Welcome. Do you wanna say anything?
That's not a lot.
I know that's not a lot. I'm sorry, who was that?
Did she get it out of the app or did I get it out?
Uh, is this for public comment or just to introduce Erin?
Uh, it's to introduce Erin.
Oh, fantastic, I recognize Tom Christopher, thanks, Tom. I didn't see you, sorry.
Thanks. That's quite all right, Mr. Chairman, you're not the first, you have to adopt me.
No, sorry, technology has not been our strong suit today, Tom, so I apologize.
Uh, I, I would, I would like to take this opportunity to introduce Erin Callanan. Uh, Erin, uh, comes to us with, uh, integrated environmental science with concentration in natural resources and, and conservation. Uh, she's currently employed in the product field, and, uh, she has the endorsement of the full Conservation Commission. Uh, Erin has also been engaged in doing research relative to renewable energy resources. Uh, she's done some research with climate change and its effect on insects, and has also spent some time working, uh, at the New England Aquarium as a volunteer. So the commission feels that Erin will certainly bring an additional perspective to our board, and, uh, certainly will add some diversity, uh, to, uh, our, our thought process. And this is something that, uh, we would, uh, be very anxious to, uh, have her as part of our team.
Thank you very much, Tom, I appreciate that. Um, Erin, do you have anything you wanna say? Otherwise, we will consider and likely, uh, adopt the Conservation Commission's recommendation for appointment. Seeing nothing from Erin. Uh, you all heard Mr. Christopher, so is there a motion?
A lot for motion, I just like to ask Erin a question. That's okay?
Uh, which one are you gonna do first?
Well, probably since before we get to discussion, it would probably be best to ask the question first.
Yes. That is correct.
Okay.
Um, Erin, are you able to?
If she's able to.
Answer a question, if you're not, um, maybe Tom, if Tom has the knowledge to answer the question for you, we could yield to the chair.
Erin, can you hear?
Nope, she's connecting to audio.
Okay.
Erin, you're muted, but please unmute and, there you are. Nice to.
There you go, hello.
Hi there, nice to, um, virtually meet you. Um, select person Turner has a question for you, so I.
Hi Erin, it's very nice to meet you, and thank you for offering to serve the town. Um, like you, I'm interested in the environment and have worked in horticulture, so there you go. Uh, I, the question, um, that I had is, as you know, Lancaster is rich in, um, in wetland resources, among other things. And it's a very active commission, I served on the commission for a while. Uh, I'm not sure if Tom was trying to sweet-talk you, but there is work at varied times outside of the meetings, and I just wanted to make you aware, and just, uh, if you're not aware, that there's opportunities and trainings and work, but it's more than the other.
I mean.
Bi-weekly.
I would just say, Erin, before you, we're not supposed to be interviewing her, they made a recommendation, but you're.
Well, I actually was following this, I thought, just informally, I thought we.
Erin, do you have any comment?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I, I work full-time, but, uh, I can definitely see what I can work around with that. Um, my, you know, my job can be, can, can be pretty flexible. Um, but yeah, no, I would definitely appreciate any, you know, any training and experience that I can get from the position.
Sounds good.
There's some great stuff, there's some great resources, Erin.
Great, anything else?
No, thank you. Um, do we have a motion?
No, you were supposed to do that next time.
My next thing is, I have the pleasure, I will make, offer a motion to appoint Erin Callanan to become a Conservation Commissioner for a term to expire June 30th, 2025.
Uh, what I heard is for her to become a Conservation Commissioner?
A term on the Conservation Commission.
Yes.
Okay, can, can you repeat the motion?
I would offer a motion to appoint Erin Callanan as Conserv, a Conservation Commissioner for a term to ex, not an agent, is that what you're thinking? And a commissioner, for a term to.
To the Conservation Commission, right?
Yeah, we're appointing her to the Conservation Commission.
Not a commissioner, okay.
Uh, for a term to expire June 30th, 2025.
I second the motion to appoint Erin Callanan to the Conservation Commission, term to expire June 30th, 2025, thank you.
Any discussion on the motion?
None.
Hearing none? Uh, all those in favor, Mr. Allison.
Aye.
Ms. Turner.
Aye.
Mr. Carrigan, aye, 300. Erin, welcome aboard, thank you for your willingness to serve. Tom, thank you, and the rest of the commission, uh, for the great work you've done in recruiting and, uh, and bringing Erin to the table. So we are grateful to everyone and look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carrigan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Next, resignations. Uh, okay, we have a resignation from Frank McGrory for the Thayer Memorial Library Trustee, effective September 1st, 2022. Uh, I will say, I don't know how many decades Frank McGrory has served on the, um, uh, Library Board of Trustees, but I will say my father was on the Library Board of Trustees in the 80s with Frank McGrory. Um, and, um, he has, I don't think, I think it has been an uninterrupted, um, term in office. Uh, no one has dedicated more time and energy to the Lancaster Public Library than Frank McGrory. He, um, uh, he is a lifelong educator, um, and a, a real pillar in the community. Uh, I've had the great honor of knowing him since I was a wee lad in first grade, uh, and, uh, and consider him a dear friend now. And I am grateful to him for the, again, probably half-century of, uh, if not more, he'll definitely call me and correct me, um, for, uh, his dedication to the library and to the town. Um, he, uh, he, he surely deserves our gratitude. Um, and so I encourage anybody who sees Frank McGrory or wants to reach out to him to thank him for his service, um, to the town, both in this regard and in the many, many other unsung moments of his career supporting our town, so.
What is even more impressive, Steve, Chairman Carrigan?
Yes.
Is that he's known me since I was a wheel ass. So even more. And I echo Steve's comments. Frank's service is not limited to the library, but he certainly has played a pivotal role in shaping the library, the history. You may see him at elections, council on aging, and so I know that the library was always probably top of the heap for, for Frank. So I thank you for those years helping shape and one, shape a wonderful institution.
Well, thank you. So moved? We don't have to move. No, we're just, we're just, we've accepted his resignation, regrettable but understandably. Continuing on with resignations, we have Community Preservation Act Committee, Pete Kristof, effective August 16th, 2022. Pete, we thank you for your service on the Community Preservation Act Committee. We also thank you, Pete, for your service on the Cultural Council, or Cultural Commission, rather, which you also resigned from effective immediately, along with Ann Fleury, who resigned from the Cultural Commission. And then lastly, we have our Lancaster representative to the, one of the, sorry, to the Nishoba School Committee, Sean Windsor. Sean has agreed to stay on until we name a replacement for the Nishoba School Committee. He is being generous with his time in that regard and we thank him for his continued commitment to the town and his willingness to stick around until we're able to find another replacement to appoint.
I'd like to just say that I echo again your thanks. I've worked with Ann and Pete on the Cultural Commission and they did a fabulous job. It'll be lost to the Cultural Commission, I believe. And we're going into the grant award time. So it's imperative that we not only look for school committee quickly, but that is, I'm not sure if we have enough members. We were in this position last year, so we need to make sure we have enough members. Ann and Pete did a great job and I, I hope people appreciate what they did for the town here and in other roles, including planning and community preservation. So I thank them. And I thank Sean for sticking around, as you said.
All right. Okay, great. Now, I refer just to our clerk for licenses and permits. We have three to consider.
I'll do them one by one, I guess. I'll offer a motion for a special one-day liquor license application for beer and wine permit. The applicant Allison Minette for the American Cancer Society Bicycles Battling Cancer Cycling Fundraiser to be held Saturday, September 24th, 2022, from 7:00 to 4:00 at 132 Fort Pond In Road, Lancaster.
All those in favor? Any discussion, rather? Oh, second, sorry.
Second.
All those, any discussion?
No, it appeared that everything was in order, Kate.
Yep. So I just, on the general principle, I assume if it's on the agenda, everything's in order.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Ms. Turner? Mr. Carrigan? Oh, sorry. Ms. Turner?
Aye.
Mr. Carrigan? Aye, 300. Next.
Allow for motion for special, to grant a special one-day liquor license for an all-alcohol pour for the First Church of Christ Unitarian, as applied for by George Franz. It's for the Horshard Fair, Community Craft Fair, October 1st, 2022, from 10:00 to 4:00, not including its setup and cleanup at the First Church of Christ Unitarian here on the Green.
Second?
Did you make the motion? You're second.
I made the motion. He's second.
He's second. All in, any discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Ms. Turner?
Allow for motion for the application.
You gotta say aye first.
Aye, I'm sorry.
And then aye, 300. Congratulations, George. Next.
All right, poll just there. I offer an motion for the application for the use of the town green gazebo, as applied for by Thayer Memorial Library for a program on therapy animals featuring a mini horse and a mini donkey, Thursday, October 6th, 2022, from 3:00 to 4:30.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor, Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Ms. Turner?
Aye.
Mr. Carrigan? 300, aye. Aye, 300. Got it. Okay. New business?
No.
Okay. Communications, that one is relative to the town meeting. It's not happening. Not that day at least.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. I assume that you are going to be keeping the select board next meeting on the 27th.
Because the 26th is Rosh Hashanah and so.
Yep, but it says pre-town meeting, but it'll just be.
It'll just be a special topic, or a special select board.
Split, special select board.
Actually, I think that's a regular, isn't it?
It's on Tuesday, so it can't be a regular.
Oh, I apologize. Thank you.
Apology accepted.
Good catch.
Miss ladies' correspondence and memorandums, any?
No.
No? Okay. All right, ongoing projects, old business. Both of these are in your bailiwick, Ms. Turner. Audit Committee and Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance Property. Hit it.
Am I asking to table those again?
Okay. Both of those are tabled. Thank you. And now we are, let's just look that table. At this point, the board will enter an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss litigation strategy, Ray Alexander Turner's DUA appeal as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the select board and not, and we will not convene an open session thereafter.
So moved?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you abstain?
Aye, abstain.
Okay. 201. Thank you all. We're going to go into executive session.